Can Kathy use the link that you have up on the screen if she has to use a different link?
Well, she needs to be a panelist. If you forward her yours, she can just change her name and do it that way.
I was trying to get in earlier by utilizing the link you sent for tomorrow night. So maybe that's what she's trying to do.
Do we want to wait to Dr. Hooker or do we think we're okay to start?
I'm having try. I only have my link from the phone and that doesn't, I'm not able to forward that to her. Somebody else?
I can do that. I can send her mine.
I just sent her mine.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and she can just switch her name. So. All right. All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. If you are online, if you need to, if you wanted to download the agenda, it is on our website under the Board of Ed. So we will call meeting to order. 7:31. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10, 4-10. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable, Cablevision Channel 118 and Vios Channel 24, and filing by filing such notice with the Township Quick. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mara, please.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Burns. Callie.
Yeah.
DeCaro.
Here.
DePrima.
Yeah.
Dunn.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Lent. Silikowski.
Here.
Ellis Foster.
Here.
Quarm exists.
Thank you. All right. If I can ask everyone, we will. One second. We'll. There we go. If we can stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Just moving toward agenda. Next week we will, unfortunately, we will have a moment of silence. And the first course of action, we do have an amendment to the, to the agenda. We have two things to add. So I just want to hold that up right now because we do need to vote on that. So. So there are two items that we need to add to today's agenda. One is for policies, which is still just the first reading, but there's a policy we want to add. So we can add that to our first reading. And then another item to add to finance. So I would like to ask for a motion to accept the addendum so we can include those on today's business. I could have a motion, please.
DeCaro was second.
And then was that done?
Yes.
First, DeCaro seconded.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any, any questions on this addendum? All right. If we can have a roll call, Mr. Mara, please.
Burns.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
DeCaro.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Silikowski.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
The adding the addendum to the agenda is approved.
Thank you. So now next on the agenda, just want to pull that up for everybody. So next is. If I can ask one of our members if you'd like to read the code of Ethics Corner for next week's meeting?
I'll do it.
Is that Mrs. Callie?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I didn't see. This is kind of great. Thank you. Then we will have approval of minutes, which we received. No student, no student representative yet. Recognition, I don't think we have. But we do have a superintendent's report. And so I know, Mr. Sedino, you do have some information you want to share today. We'll get up that deck. So, all right, and Mr. Sedino, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Thank you very much. Board members, public, thank you for being here tonight. The, as we all know, we have been working towards a reopening planned for the Old Bridge Township Public Schools for quite some time. In late June, we were notified that the school districts had to develop a reopening plan for our schools. And we were advised that all schools reopening plan only could contain in-person instruction models. There could be no remote for parents to choose or the district to choose. By mid to late July, there was a revising of that executive order of the governor. And within a week's time, we had to modify our plan that we were working on through our committee, the reentry task force to incorporate parent choice in a remote-only option. So the reentry force did that. And we presented that information to you as a board in late July, prior to submitting it to the state on August the 3rd. Our committee, our task force, a lot of great work into that. Of those board members who were, who observed the process today should have seen that there's a lot of effort towards consensus building and hearing the expertise of everyone within the committee. And we are really proud of the reopening plan that was put forward because we think of all the options that are out there. It offers the safest alternatives within the very narrow parameters that were given, that schools had to have an in-person model. The, the date after we submitted a plan, the checklist for our plan came out after we had already submitted it. And then you saw last week, last, I think Wednesday or Thursday, the governor again modified the plans that are submitted into the state of New Jersey. We, we submitted ours August 3rd, and the state approved it approximately a week later. And after they approved it, they said, well, plans can now consider and take into effect that a remote start, for 100% remote start to the school year, can be an option in certain situations where there is continued concern for health and safety of students and staff. As this whole process was done, it was not done autonomously. It's not based upon my, my feelings as a superintendent, but always through the committee. So we brought it to the committee last week. Last Friday, we heard and held an emergency meeting to provide them with the parameters that had changed, to see if revisiting it, they felt more comfortable in revising our plan. Everyone was given time to think about it, do research, review the research that was provided. And then on Tuesday, this today, this afternoon, well, we should say the morning, we met again for a three and a half hour session, reviewing that information, reviewing any new information that's come from the state. We learned that as of start at 10:00 a.m., when we started, there were over 50 districts in the state of New Jersey that revised their plans to have a remote-only option. Most of them revising to have been remote until the end of the first marking period, which in Old Bridge would end you probably around November 6th or 9th area, or to the second marking period, January 1st. The end of the second marking period, or January 1st in some districts. We looked at that information. We looked at our needs as a district. And this is the recommendation going forward from our reentry task force that I'm about to share with the group. I will have Dr. Tui help me with some portions of it as he goes into a better picture of what learning options will be in the plan to have clear understanding for all parents and staff and students. So within the next slide, these are some of the remaining concerns that we have within there. We've been working towards them. We will continue to work towards them. But we received little to no guidance from the state in doing so. And as I've said hundreds of times before, this is not one of those situations where you can glean data from years before and what happened in recent situations. You know, New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, we've been really on top of this pandemic for the most part, and shut down quickly using masks and, and so forth to really carry on the height of concern. And I think we've seen positive results, but by no means have we eliminated this pandemic going forward. So we look at districts that are already starting to go back to school. I don't know if those are fair assessments right now too, because I'm telling you, as superintendent, and I was, if my only data was to look at the districts from the states from the South, there would be no way we'd be going back to in-person instruction because they've had little to no success. And most of that is built upon they, you know, the, the parameters and preparation going in, going into the pandemic. So in our own concerns, you know, transportation remains a major issue. Even today, right before this meeting, there is still some concerns about out-of-district outsourced transportation and its viability and its availability to us as a district. As you can imagine, the need for runs is at a high need, and the having, finding professionals to do those jobs is very scarce right now. We received kind of like a ultimatum email from a transportation company that remained anonymous right up into the, the beginning of this meeting. So those are really big concerns that we're still having. And we will be still working up until we bring back an in-person education model. One of the requirements we're having for all our own in-house transportation and vendor transportation is that they must be cleaning the buses between runs. There is no way to do this if you're not exact exercising the greatest level of caution in cleaning the buses between runs. Temperature checks prior to exiting the buses. We've worked hard to attain the necessary touchless monitors. We bought them early on. But as we developed the plan, our plan entitles basically a temperature check at every bus. So we still need more devices. However, we've gotten more and we're confident we can still get more there, but there's still something we do need. I've gone over the necessary amount of drivers and aids. They're just not available. And to promise you that transportation will be ready for that, for that level of driver force, I'm not sure I can, I can promise that at this time. Nursing staff. This has been a problem well documented across the tri-state area that finding nurses for schools during this pandemic has been quite a unfruitful exercise. There's a real shortage in this area. Especially when you come to the quarantining protocols that the Department of Health has outlined for schools. In an elementary school alone, if a student or a staff member exhibits symptomatics, symptoms, that student or staff member has to be sent to an isolation area where they have to be monitored by a professional nurse. What about the nurse for the students, the other remaining students who still need to have their, their medicines that delivered to them on a regular basis? We have students at our elementary schools that still receive feeding through devices and change, changing of soiled garments and so forth, and everything else that a nurse has to deal with other than symptomatic elements of the pandemic. We wouldn't have enough nurses to take care of that concern according to the guidance that we've had. So we need more guidance for them on how to address that and who can be in these isolation rooms and areas with symptomatic staff and students. A proper level of PPE, something we continue to order. We're still on back order for certain items that have been hard to find across the county and across the tri-state area. Again, as this pandemic still continues to spread through the Southwest, the PPE, such as gowns and so forth, that we would need for temperature screenings are not easily, easy to come by. Disinfecting wipes are not easy to come by. We'd hope with more time, we would get the opportunity to get those items. We have a plan in place, the cleaner bathrooms and so forth. We want to make sure that our staff have limited bathrooms, that we have measures in place to make sure that their bathrooms are clean, our desks are clean at the high school through class changes, and all of the other quarantine protocols that I've kind of discussed earlier on. A big concern is the air ventilation during warm weather. That's something we weren't allowed to really address during the old parameters because you had to have an in-person model. So only option we had was to sporadic canceling of in-person to go to full remote on days when the temperature was not in place, going to be opportune for learning in the classroom. You have high numbers of humidity, temperature. Opening the windows only makes the temperature in the room and the humidity increase. We have a requirement to circulate 15% fresh air from the outside on high heat and humidity days. Bringing in more outside air will only make the inside room hotter and more humid. And if you're wearing a mask, really, not really very good for your health at that point for four and a half hours of wearing a mask in a, in a classroom with temperatures exceeding 90, 90 miles, oh, I'm sorry, 90 degrees. Of our students, over 3,000 families have signed up for the remote, remote only, approximately 35% of our staff. The guidelines we receive from the Department of, Department of Health provide this information that in a classroom, in a school, regardless of its size, that if two students in a, in a classroom exhibit symptoms of COVID or test positive for COVID, the school is to remain open. And the, the, everyone within that classroom and contact list within those students then goes on quarantine for 14 days. If two different students in two, in another classroom also exhibit symptoms of COVID-19 or test positive for COVID-19, then the school must be shut down. This is regardless of the size of the school, whether that's a high school or a Grissom or Cooper school. I think they really need to revisit that and come back with more guidance that is appropriate instead of just flat numbers. Secondly, as I walk back to my memory of March, there were many parents who were concerned about false rumors of positive cases in the GNC and in other areas. And once we did have a real case, really concerned about that one case within a family and demanding that schools be shut down and the names of the schools or where the student went to school or the class be given. I'm really concerned about this level of hysteria. That'll happen when a, a student or staff member becomes symptomatic or proves to be positive for COVID. I don't think we would get to the four people in a, in a building before parents would stop, start pulling their students out of the schools or staff would not want to show up because of their own concern for health. Now, we wouldn't know our staffing needs until we presented our plan. Like every district across the state, the staff needs to know their plan before they can submit their requirements or their seeking accommodations. Under the Family Leave Act, under the COVID Family Leave Act, Federal Family Leave Act, there's accommodations that you must provide for staff members who seek to do telework. And this is a federal accommodation. Also, we have staff members who may have concerns based upon their own health, the health of a family member, the health of someone they care for, or the need to still care for people who are still feeling the effects of COVID within their family or other and other illness. So I have 175 staff members at this point seeking accommodations. By September 4th, which was our projected start of our hybrid schedule, there'd be no way for our personnel department to kind of process those 175 requests and then seek replacements when and if needed for those staff members whose requests were approved. And we'd have a hard time not approving many of them. It would require us to hire staff, train staff, and provide the appropriate necessary training and equipment for them. That would prove to be very hard for 175-plus staff members before the beginning of school. So we're going to need more time on that. That's probably with the climate and the school temperatures, probably the two main reasons of our, our committee brought us to the decision and the recommendation coming forward next. So this is the phase or the recommendation of the committee that the district changes the calendar for September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd to be all professional development days for staff. When our staff left our buildings in March, a lot of the buildings were left as is, classrooms left as is. Teachers need the materials and so forth, need their training. We have to provide in-depth training on dealing with COVID and COVID symptoms, dealing with the social and emotional learning needs of students, dealing with the remote instruction that is already part of the plan, and to provide a better learning option and opportunities for our students based upon that. So we moved, instead of having two days and then a third in-service day in mid-November, we moved all the in-service days to front-load it to get everyone prepared for all the information they need. The fourth would be a distribution day of equipment for, for families to pick up workbooks, equipment, and their HP streams that would be made available to all students in the district. Phase one would begin on September 8th with a, that being the first day of instruction, September 8th, instead of September 3rd, and would go through October 9th with 100% remote district-wide instruction. Phase two would begin October 12th, and at that point, we, we visit, going back to our 33% hybrid plan with three cohorts of 33% and a fourth cohort of remote-only students, those who already opted for remote-only for the whole marking period. That would be in phase two. Because our plan is always to reopen the schools and get back to normalcy, we would like to introduce a phase three with a date to be determined where we would expand from 33% to 60%, 66% hybrid plan to bring more students back in more regularly. As we see data and as we see contact and trends decrease, and we see exposure trends decrease due to COVID, we'd like to increase our capacity within our school. And last, the phase four would be a full reopening, having all students within our school. I equate this as a superintendent to the delayed openings that we do during inclement weather during the wintertime. A lot of times, and for some reason, always in New Jersey, the storm never arrives the night before. It always seems to arrive between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m. And I have to make a decision by 5:00 a.m. So the smartest decision I can make at that point is to call for a delayed opening. So let's see what the storm brings because we have no idea at that point. We don't know if we're going to get dumped on with eight inches of snow or a mere dusting. But the mindset always is the health and safety first of our staff and our students. So we call for a delayed opening with everybody coming in by approximately 9:00, 10:00 a.m. At that point, we know what the storm is going to bring. If there's been a real threat, and if we don't see a real threat, we have everybody coming, continue to come in at 10:00. But if we see that the threat really would preclude us from having school that day, it allows us to cancel at that point. My concern with other districts that are promoting or going to full remote for a whole marking period is just the opposite of that too. I don't want to have a, instead of having delayed opening to cancel school for the day. I hear you. I want our students back in school. But I don't want to take that risk either. So this allows us to test the waters, bring our, bring our students in remotely, allows our staff to prepare our students for the hybrid instruction in which they'll receive and to bring our, our students in in a safe manner that meets those needs. Now, there's one thing that I haven't mentioned as part of the requirements of the, the governor's directive. He changed it so that the superintendent's of school now has to certify that the district has done everything it can to ensure the safety of students and staff. And it doesn't require the Board to sign it. It requires the superintendent to sign that he or she will attest or certify that the district has done everything it can for the safety of those. I have one number that concerns me always as superintendent is how many staff members and how many students have lost their lives to my negligence. At this point, that number has been zero. If I can retire with that number remaining zero, that's the most important thing to me. I promise our parents all the time that when you, you bring us your children, we're going to bring them home happier and smarter, hopefully, each day. At the end of this, it's my goal to just ensure that all of our students and all of our, our staff continue with a healthy, productive lives without taking unnecessary risks. Next slide, please. I think Dr. Tui, he's doing a great job with looking at our full remote and what it would look like. There's another, a lot of questions that, what does 100% remote learning look like? And we've always had this as part of our plan because we always felt as though at some point, when the pandemic became necessary, that the governor would close the schools. So. became necessary that the governor would close the schools. So we had to have a plan in place that would be better than our plan in March. So maybe Dr. Tui can walk us through the remote learning, hundred percent remote learning plan for those parents and staff members who still have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. There were a number of different areas that we looked at and based on the feedback that we received in the spring. There were three main points that stood out to both committees, which is the Return to School Committee and the Remote Learning Committee. The first was parent feedback of the need for live remote instruction. And you're gonna hear that a lot during the course of the next few slides, in part because live remote instruction is really a cornerstone of the one-hundred percent remote model that we are reviewing tonight. The second is the appropriate access to technology. One of the things that we found back in March and then moving through the spring is that many households were sharing devices. Students were on iPhones or they were on an iPad that wasn't really compatible with a lot of the resources that the district was providing. So while the teachers and the, you know, the parents were working, you know, very hard to maintain the student's attention and provide appropriate academic activities, they, there just wasn't the access to technology in the house. Over the course of the past two months, the district has addressed that and we are moving to a full one-to-one model across district, which is very advantageous for our students and the parents who will be utilizing those materials ideally for the first couple of weeks of school. And the last component that you're gonna get, that will be highlighted here is the importance of the social emotional learning or SEL component. In each of the schedules, we are looking to build in time to ensure that our teacher, teaching staff, our guidance staff, our SAC counselors, our child study team members are able to provide services to the parents and students who are facing some difficult times during the course of this, these past couple of months. Not everyone has been extremely successful with the remote learning components. And part of that is because there was a struggle with some of the social emotional learning components that that will be highlighted today. So those are the three areas that you're gonna see over the course of the next couple of slides. So the next slide, please. Thank you. So this is an example of the Old Bridge High School and the EMGMC weekly schedule. This is gonna be very similar to the high school, high schoolers who are tuning in and/or their parents. It's very similar to what was presented and what was done towards the end of the spring semester last year. On the next slide, what we will see is a day-to-day schedule, but just before we switch, this weekly schedule, there will be an A-week and a B-week. And during the A-week and B-week, the periods of the day will rotate along a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then Tuesday, Thursday cycle. So for example, on this first week, it would be a first full week for remote instruction. Would be either the week of, it would be the week of September eighth. If we started on a Tuesday, the students would have their Tuesday classes, which would be the, in this particular instance, the five, six, seventh and eighth periods of the eight-period day. On Wednesday, they would have periods one through four, Thursday, five through eight, and Friday, one through four. Built into the high school schedule is a forty-five minute period at the beginning of the day. Based on the contractual hours as outlined in the OBA contract, students and staff would be required to attend for the four periods for approximately seventy minutes. Those four periods would be assigned and all students at the high school would be assigned an eight-period day, similar to what they have now. So there's no change in the way that the students are approaching their day-to-day activities or their coursework at the high school. The forty-five minute period at the beginning of the day would allow for students to check in again with guidance staff, SAC counselors, child study team members. Or any of their other teachers that they had questions or concerns about. Additionally, it will provide students with the ability to have a student activities period. And allow for teachers to answer any of the email questions they might have received from the night before. Follow up with any parent phone calls or just, just address any of the other major concerns that come up from one day to the next. So on the next slide, you'll see more of a specific example of what a day would look like. So again, we have the student activities period which runs from seven thirty-five to eight twenty. There's a five-minute window of time between the student activities period and the first period of the day. That first period, all the first periods are, all the periods are seventy minutes. In part because as we're, we're rotating through four periods of the day and again, within the, the time is outlined by the high school schedule. Seventy minutes was kind of a sweet, a sweet spot in terms of the amount of time necessary to do a live remote instruction lesson. Where the teacher and students would log in at their predetermined time. So again, let's go through this student's schedule. That first period is a math class. The student logs in at eight twenty-five. They're logging into their Algebra II math class. The, the teacher is providing maybe a twenty-five or thirty-minute remote, live remote instruction period. The students can then do some independent work. They can swing back together towards the end of the period to review the independent work and answer any questions. And then the students would transition to their next period, which would be period two, say, English four. So the students would check in at nine forty. They would have a seventy-minute, seventy-minute English period with their teacher. Again, similar type of activities. They would have a live remote instruction period. There would be time for independent work. And, and also additional time for the students to circle back with the teachers to work on any questions or concerns that they have. Similar schedule would be for periods three and four with approximately a fifty-minute lunch scheduled from twelve oh five to twelve fifty-five. On the next slide, we're going to review the Salk and Sandberg Middle School schedules. They are slightly different because they are not on an A-week, B-week cycle. What we found is as we transitioned to the lower levels of, and areas of academics. There was a really need to be more consistent with a lot of the core subject areas. The students really were struggling with some of the basics in ELA and math that you saw from the beginning of this when we were out of school in March. So on the middle school schedule, there's more continuity with the periods. They start a little bit later at eight thirty. So the, all the periods are forty-five minutes. They follow with the current master schedule as outlined by both Salk and Sandberg administrative, administrative teams. And the period, the day would end at approximately two fifty. So each day the students would have access to their math teacher, their English teacher for a double period, social studies, science, and then either their combination of related arts or world language, depending on what their cycle was for this particular marking period. On the next slide, we're gonna find a more detailed version of what the day's schedule would look like. So from, again, based on the contractual hours as outlined in the OBA contract. The teacher prep time would be from eight fifty, eight o'clock, excuse me, eight o'clock in the morning to eight forty-five. That teacher prep time would also allow for the students to, again, as with the high school. Students can check in with their counselor. They could check in with the SAC counselor. They can check in with their child study team member or the case manager. It would allow for more accessibility for students who are potentially struggling with some of the core academic areas. Or any of those social emotional components that were highlighted earlier in the presentation. From eight forty-five until nine thirty, there's an activities period. Again, what we found is a lot of the students, especially on the secondary level, whether it was the band, whether it was the plays. Participating in clubs or activities, that's a major component for middle schoolers and for high schoolers. And we wanted to integrate that into the schedule to ensure there was dedicated time to allow them to participate in those activities with their fellow, fellow students. Additionally, this would allow for administration to schedule professional development time. It would allow for administration to schedule meetings. Child study team meetings can be held during this period. RTI meetings can be held during this period. So it's, it's almost a really more of a faculty-guided professional development period in addition to serving the purpose of allowing students to participate in bands' activities and also the clubs. The core academics start at nine thirty and there's again, six forty-five minute periods. There's a single period of math. A double period of ELA for approximately ninety minutes. A social studies period, a world language and related arts period that would be rotating based on the cycle that they're in. And then finally, a science period and students will be done at two fifty. One of the things I haven't touched on yet is attendance. On the secondary level, it's extremely important to know that student attendance will be taken every period. So in the high school, in the high school schedule, if you're period one, two, three and four and you're a high school student, you will be expected to check in period one, two, three and four, similar to a situation where you would be at school. Same thing with periods five through eight. At the middle school, it's the same thing. You would check in and you would participate in the live remote instruction provided for your math class, for your English class, science and social studies classes, as well as your related arts and world language. So there would be a mandatory attendance policy. If there was a student who was sick or was unable to attend on that given day. As of right now, the policy will be that the parent would similarly contact the nurses they have done in the past. And the nurse will follow up if there's a specific issue or concern that they have with the student being absent for a multiple days in a row. So attendance will be noted for all grade levels, but in particular, on the secondary level, it'll be a period-by-period basis. On the next slide, we have a general outline of, of elementary. And again, this is not the most, this is a little bit intense in terms of the amount of information on here, but I wanted to give you an idea of, of what the weekly schedule would look like. And we're gonna get a real, a much more detailed version in next, next slide. But each day for elementary is gonna be very prescribed. The goal, and again, what we found from parent feedback, from staff feedback that we received over the course of the past six months or five months, is that, you know, live remote instruction and having that connection with the student's teacher is really paramount to many of our students' successes. And the, you know, teachers were, were, a lot of teachers embraced the concept of providing synchronous and asynchronous instruction for the students. But one of the things that we, we really found, especially on the elementary level, is the need to have scheduled time for live remote instruction. And you're gonna see that in the next slide when we look at the day-to-day activities of the elementary building. So again, this is a sample schedule. These are subject to change. They are tentative. The goal here is to present to the public a general idea of what a, a schedule would look like for an elementary student. So again, an elementary student to start time is approximately nine, ten. And they would start with a whole group class meeting. In many of our elementary buildings where we are in a session. In each of the eleven elementary buildings, they have a morning meeting or a morning greeting. However, the phrase is, and that morning greeting is really an opportunity for the students to get together, share some of their, their experiences that they've had over the course of the past day or or the previous night. And allows for the students to have some socialization time, again, for that important SEL or social emotional learning component. So we want to make that an important aspect here. It also provides for some integration components for students who are, might be in a self-contained class or a different homeroom in the past. They weren't included in these rooms and now they are, they all have a homeroom in the elementary school. So this is, this whole class live remote instruction would provide the entire class the opportunity to see each other, whether on Microsoft Teams page, which is preferable, or, or some of the other online platforms that, that the district has subscribed to over the course of the past year. The, when I say prescribed times on the elementary level, there's gonna be live remote instruction and very specific times. So again, working through the schedule from nine thirty to ten, there's gonna be a live remote instruction activity with the class as a whole. It can be the teacher presenting materials. It can be the provision of a video that the students can review. And then the teacher can follow up with the students as part of their thirty or forty-minute window of time to work on ELA. Then there would be a small group instruction breakout session where students can work either in small groups based on their skill level. This can also be a time where the RTI teachers integrate into the general education classrooms to, to provide small group instruction for students who might have struggles. This could be an area where students are being, students are being addressed by their resource teacher in a, another side classroom or what Microsoft Teams calls as channel. But there will be obviously resource instruction as well as all the special education programs and access to special education programs through the remote instruction components. There's a built-in snack at ten thirty. You would have about an hour of math work. And again, this is where RTI ESL can push into the general education classroom and work with some of those struggling learners. As well as it allows for the elementary teachers to provide live remote instruction for their students who are following along on their HP streams at home. Lunch will be from approximately eleven forty-five to twelve thirty-five. Again, these, these times are, are a little fluid, but this will be a general overview of what the schedule would look like. You would have science activities in the afternoon. Every other day would either be a science activity or a social studies activity. This would allow, these are more, gonna be more thematic activities where the both science, social studies and some of the ELA components are gonna be worked into larger overall themes to allow for the students to have, as opposed to a very prescribed envision slash journeys, you must do this on this day. The themes allow for a little bit more fluid introduction of materials and ensures that the students are actively engaged in the lesson. You will, you could also have, there's gonna be small, very small cohorts during the day. There will be related arts, there will be related services. And then at the end of the day, approximately two twenty, there will be physical education time. And also for teacher preparation for pushing out materials for the next day. Again, this is gonna be a combination of synchronous, which is live instruction or asynchronous, which would be videos or some other sort of ditto's or activities that the students can, can utilize, envisions work, journeys work. We can, will be using Newsella, we'll be using iXL for science, grades two through five. So, you know, there's a lot of resources available to teachers and they will need time to disseminate those materials to their, their students. And that would be at the end of the day on the sample elementary schedule. So what does special education look like? So the special education students will have a clearly defined schedule inclusive of academics and related services. What we found in March and April is that there was a little bit of people stepping on each other's toes in terms of trying to schedule and coordinate activities for students in respective buildings. Once the academics and the core academics are scheduled with the respective resource, LLD, MDA, BA, LLD VIP class teachers, then the related service providers will be provided with that schedule so we can have one coordinated effort to provide schedules for students. So the teacher, the case manager and the related service provider are all on the same page. Those schedules will be developed over the first couple of weeks of school to ensure the students have equal access to all the programs outlined in their IEP. Special education students will have access to live remote instruction with their instructors based on the individual IP programming. So again, if they have a resource teacher for part of the day, they will have access to their resource teacher for those core, core content areas. If they are in a self-contained program for part of the day, then they would have access to that self-contained teacher for part of the day. And it's important that those teachers help to coordinate the times that the student would have to log on to see their respective teacher. Related services would additionally be provided by the related service providers, again, OTPT and speech in accordance to the student's IEP to the greatest extent possible. One of the things that we found as we transitioned in March to our remote platform is that the truncated day from ten to two really didn't lend itself to having all of the related services scheduled during the course of the day. Because we have various different times that are associated with various different related services. For example, at preschool, it's a fifteen-minute session for speech. On this, on the elementary level, it's twenty-five. The related service providers would create their schedule as they would do in any normal year. Coordinate that with the classroom teachers as to where those classroom teachers are gonna be doing their live remote instruction and provide the services in accordance with the student's IEP. And there's an issue with scheduling or if there's an issue with the, the services is outlined in the student's IEP, we would address those with the case manager and obviously the parent as we move forward. Students in multi-program, and I think I mentioned this, will have time with their respective teachers and support staff to the greatest extent possible. And this would be established when creating a student's schedule. And then students' programs will be periodically reviewed to determine the effectiveness of the daily schedule. Based on IP goals and, and teacher feedback. So again, as we progress through the spring. Some, we, we found some things that worked very well. We found some things that needed to be adjusted. And we are able to take those adjustments and those enhancements to ensure that the students have a much more robust program when it comes to September. Some of these were already mentioned, but just an outline of related services, again, specifically OTPT and speech. Related services will be provided remotely in accordance with students' IP to the greatest extent possible. Related service providers will be providing services during OBA contracted hours. They will, they will contact parents to schedule their remote appointments beginning the school year during the first two weeks. And again, part of this is because the first week of school is an indirect service week to ensure that the related service providers have the ability to schedule the appointments in accordance with the instructional time that the teachers are going to, to need the, the students as well. As in the spring, parents may opt out of remote related services. That's, that will well be within their right. It will not change in their students' respective IEP, but they can remote, opt out of remote services if they, if they deem that their student cannot handle it or doesn't feel like it's a, an action that they want to continue with, at least on remote. When being provided with remote instruction. Provision of related services based on three-to-ones related service model. You know, with the anticipation that we will be returning to school sometime this year, ideally in October, but potentially, you know, at some point this year. The evaluations do not go away. The related service providers still have to provide evaluations. They still have to consult with parents. They still consult with teachers. They're still programming AAC devices. So while this is subject to change, as of right now, the related service providers will be based on the three to one related service model. And that's, that calendar will be up on the district website on August 20. Upon return to school, related service providers will be, related services will be potentially provided both in push-in and pull-out models. And any requests for compensatory services, related services will be based upon our return to school, ideally sometime in, in October. The last area that was a, that has come up is, you know, response intervention, English language learners. How do we help those students who are struggling academically with this very unique model? Well, number one, the relate, the response intervention, teachers will be utilized by their building principals in conjunction with guidance from the RTI supervisor. The RTI supervisor is currently working to ensure that all of the RTI staff have a very comprehensive schedule. One that they're being, all of those RTI teachers are being used to the very, the largest extent possible to provide that additional service for the students who are, are struggling during this remote instruction model. RTI will use tier two and tier three services to provide a dedicated time for virtual instruction for students in their charge. And the RTI instructors can utilize Microsoft channels, which is the breakout room feature of Microsoft Teams to provide targeted instruction for their students, both in ELA and, and math. English language learners, those instructors will also be utilized in a similar capacity to ensure that the ELL population is getting the services that they, they need to make appropriate gains academically within our, this current academic model. Thank you.
Mr. Sed, do you know you're on mute if you're talking?
So Madam President, what I submit to you and the board, what are you reviewed? Is not abandoning the plan, which the reentry team presented to the state and to this board. It just delays its implementation. Its impact would be approximately four or five in-person early dismissal days for the students. The, when we reach our date of the October the 12th, when we're supposed to start our, our hybrid model, if at that point, we're not seeing increases in contact spread, the numbers, New Jersey and this area from other school districts and, and around the community have remained relatively stagnant or safe, then we go to the plan as we, as we developed it. And parents still have an option at that point. Those who have chosen the hybrid model, proceed with the hybrid model that we developed. If parents still have concerns, parents who are on the hybrid models or selected the hybrid model, but have felt that the remote model has worked for them, or they have concerns about contact spread or, or concerns about the health of our community, beyond that, they can continue to stay on remote. This option does not discount the need for in-person instruction that we want to bring to our student. By just saying that we're going to go start the end of the first marking period or this, start the end of the second marking period. It just provides the time to address the indoor climate concerns, the staffing concerns that gives us more opportunities to look at our staffing and I think give a greater, greater comfort level to our staff. And for us to get the data that we need. The one thing that we don't have is local data on schools during this pandemic. No school in New Jersey stayed open throughout the pandemic. So we cannot say that, well, this is how much the virus spread during that time. The numbers here in Old Bridge have been great, but it does not take into account the largest mass gathering on a daily basis that takes place in the community of Old Bridge. That's Old Bridge Township Public Schools. We bring together 9,700 people into close proximity on a daily basis. The information that we have based upon the, the pandemic here locally does not take into those 9,700 people coming together. So this will give us an opportunity to look at some data, to have the information and be cautious in our carrying out of our hybrid plan, which we still fully intend to use. Thank you very much.
And I think, Mr. Sed, do you know, what I would suggest now is maybe give this the opportunity to the board members. I know many of them were able to listen in on the committee, but were not able to ask questions. And then shortly after this, you know, before we go to a vote, there will be the hearing of residents. So I think if we first, any of the board members, if you have any questions, anything that came up, I would ask you now to kind of ask them to any of the administration who could, could probably answer it for you.
Go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. I have a few questions and quite frankly, you know, I understand the cautious approach that the administration is taking. However, we are taking a step back, I believe, from last month. And I understand that the conditions have changed.
I just want to correct you, Mr. Dunn. It's not the administration taking this. It's a committee made of parents and people from the committee.
I, I understand. Okay. The administration is taking the opinion and the recommendation, which I truly respect very much. But what has changed since last month? The governor has made a decision that he's going to allow virtual learning. And that's going to leave a good portion of our children still out in the cold. And, and quite frankly, I can understand. I truly do. And I'm not here to criticize. I'm not here to say that we're doing the right or wrong thing. I'm just concerned about specifically the elementary school students. Now, they are going to have a learning calendar or they're going to have a schedule. And it's going to undo pressure on the parents to try to navigate these kids through a computer to different, different lessons and different times and different rooms. It's, it's not going to be that easy. And I'm not sure if our staff is going to come into the buildings and utilize our technology, our resources and virtual teach from classrooms, or they're going to do it from home. There's a lot of questions here. And, and you know, I, I'm just trying to get a grasp because education for the elementary school students is paramount. These kids haven't had in-person learning and this is the most critical time for these students to learn. And if we can't give them the fundamentals for the last nine months, then what's the sense? I understand, Dave. I understand the pressures that we're all under, but I'm passionate about the elementary school students. And they're the ones that are suffering the most. Okay. Middle school students and high school students can learn virtually very easily. They are self-sufficient. They're able to do things themselves. They're able to get on the computer. They're able to follow a routine. They can follow a schedule. But elementary school students can't do that. And their parents are going to be stressed no end to make sure that for six hours or seven hours, their kids are going to be in front of that computer trying to learn. And I know it's not a great situation, but I, I'm just very concerned about that aspect, that elementary school students. They're the most impressionable and they're the ones that are going to be affected the most. So with that said, are the teachers going to come in and virtually teach from the schools? Or are they going to do it from home? What happens if their technology isn't good? What happens if their bandwidth isn't good? If they don't have the access to a good computer? These things we need to also deal with. So I have those reservations.
Is that, is that your question?
Yes. Are, are teachers going to be in the classroom in ours, in our, using our resources, using our technology, our equipment? Because if we're going to be regimented with a schedule, obviously, we're going to need to make sure that the teachers can deliver. Schools are closed. There's not going to be anyone in schools. They're going to be the only ones in the classroom if that's the direction we're going to go in. So that's a question that I have. Are teachers going to be teaching virtually from the classroom?
The answer, the answer is the teachers will have the option to teach from the classroom. The, the utilities and things they have will, will be there for them. If you mandate that they must, then it doesn't eliminate the 175 accommodation requests necessarily. Because if they're caring for a sick loved one, if they have doctors orders where they can't leave their homes because of of a compromised immune system, regardless of where you're still, you're still bringing them to a place that's how it's going, could have. If we mandate everybody, then we're already expanding upon the 25 in-person that the governor's put out. So if we say everybody must come in, there still would be those with the accommodations that would be left out and we'd still have to find staffing for those people. So those who want to come in, who do not have a need, that have a need to come in, the buildings will be open for them and they'll be maintained safely for them. For those who can't because of the accommodation requests, they can work from home. But they'll have a professional responsibility to do the telework from home that is required under the federal law.
So that, that, that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable if teachers do have that option because to make this work, you know, teachers need to have their resources. They need to have the proper background. They need to have the proper technology, the, the proper bandwidth. And, and if that's going to be an option for our staff, that makes it a little bit more palatable for me to, to, to give this, you know, some consideration. Because that was part of the big problem is that we're, our, our, our teachers weren't able to deliver correctly based upon not having the resources. So if that's going to be an option, that is something that's going to be allowed. Then this is something which, you know, which isn't the best situation for me, but it's, it's a little bit more palatable since teachers will have that ability to teach from their classrooms, which make things a little bit more consistent and uniform for our students. Thank you, Dave.
Mrs. DeCara, I think you. Yes, thank you. I just have two questions. So again, regarding the elementary school, the elementary kids, because I, I just believe that, you know, while it, again, it's not the best circumstance for the middle and high school, that they, they're a little bit, they will be a little bit better to navigate things. But on the elementary level, can we have some sort of like, before school starts, like when they're picking up their materials? Can we, and again, you just kind of addressed this, but you know, that you can't mandate it, but can we have teachers come in and sort of be there to socially distance mask and everything, but meet their students when they're picking up their materials like, you know, Mrs. Jones, third grade class, you know, on a table. And have the kids come this way. They can physically see their teacher and their teacher can in turn physically see them. So it's a little bit more of a, of a personal thing before they have to go completely remote. Is there a way that that can happen? Did that make sense?
I, I understand what you're saying and it, I would have to look at it further because, you know, I don't know if there's enough time in the day to have that much staggered time to have the teacher separated from a different time. And to, you know, have everyone, because you don't want everyone coming at once, obviously. So we, we would have to look at that and obviously make it available to anyone who felt comfortable. But I need more time to examine that as an option.
Okay. All right. I just, again, it, to me, it's, it's all about FaceTime, you know, FaceTime, whether it's, you know.
Well, that's one of the things that too, I think is, you know, we're thinking about teachers, students coming in and seeing school as they left it. And they're not going to see school as they left it.
Right.
Maybe seeing it remotely first, seeing your teacher online without a mask, without a hospital gown as someone's taking your temperature. And we can get our students ready for that in those four to five weeks to get them ready for coming back to the hybrid. You have to remember, they're not going to come back and see what they saw. Students are going to get off, get on a bus. They're going to be forced to sit rows apart. Only with family members. They're going to arrive at a school where someone wearing a yellow gown, a shield, a face mask is going to be taking their temperature. I'm not sure that's the first thing you want to see on your first day, coming back without that kind of real preparation. So our teachers see them as we see each other tonight, as human beings, as caring people without all of the protective equipment. And then start preparing. The teacher holds up. You know, every kid's seen it. I'll be wearing this and, and I'll be wearing this when we're doing speech. Well, I'll have this shield on. At your temper, when you get your temperature screening, someone might be wearing this yellow gown, all things to prepare them. So then when we do begin the hybrid, our, our, the SEL concerns of our students are taken care of.
No, no, no. I understand all of that. I was just talking specifically about the day that they pick up their materials, which will all be just outside. They won't even be going in the building. I am thinking in my head.
Well, it's going to have to take place over days, you know, during probably the, the first, the second, the third and the fourth. And, you know, if I have to be here on the fifth, it will be on the fifth too. But you know, it's, it's going to have to get before.
So the materials will be distributed on one of those, those days that the teachers are back in. Okay. So they've got a lot to do on those days, especially with the training that they're going to need just to prepare for all of this. So, okay, I understand. The other thing is regarding attendance. What, what? What, 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 what plan do we have in place? If, if there's poor attendance on it, like how do we, how are we going to say John Smith, you know, is, is just not checking in, not, you know, he's, he's not, he's not around. He's pretty much absent all the time. Like how are we addressing, how will we address those issues? I mean, I know we have the social emotional learning component, but if the kid is not checking in, student is not checking in, how do we check on that?
We've done that a few ways since the, and it really wasn't as often as you would think in the spring. So in the spring, a teacher would be doing a regular daily check-ins with the students. And if the student was not responding and you couldn't get a parent response via email, the counselor kind of followed up on a more of a regular basis. We're talking over the course of the next day. Still no response. The administrator brought it to my attention and either myself or with the support of our great SROs we've had in place, we did a wellness check on the house. I probably visited seven homes over the course of the spring, if, if that many. I don't think we really needed it that often. We eventually got people to check and respond. Were they doing all the work all the time? No, but we were doing our welfare checks to make sure the kids were in place.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, that's all for me.
I'll go if anybody else doesn't want to.
That's fair.
I don't really have questions per se. Just a couple of observations through listening through all this. Assuming we go ahead with it, the date for phase three says to be determined. What will be, what will determine that? I guess that's today.
Mr. Deprima, I can't hear you. I don't know if it's.
I don't know. I'm on a different computer than usual. On phase three, it says date to be determined. What will be the determining factors for when that date is?
So if we look at phase three, that would be, like I said, are we seeing a decrease in contact spread? Are we just seeing a continued decrease in spaces? I know that this is something that, you know, Mr. O'Neill brought up in, in our committee today, that's very interesting that, and you know, I was still stunned when I was going to talk about it, but when the governor put together the plan that's, you know, mandated that we have an in-person plan in our schools, he's, he said that he would scrap the plan if the contact spread cases, sorry, did not decrease. And that's not been the case. I think, I think, and you know, Mr. O'Neill will have the, the data, but I think it was like 300 and something cases average, a three-day average in the state of New Jersey at the time. And our local three-day average has been over 500. So since he's made that mandate that we have to have in person, we've actually had an increase on the, and the three-day average across the state. So what we'd look for to go into the next phase to bring in a 60%, 66% hybrid model would be a continued decrease or decline. And we're not seeing situations where we're having to close schools or put classrooms in quarantine.
All right. So it could be two days or it could be two months. We don't know.
Right. You know, what, what we'd shoot for at that point is the, you know, the beginning of the second marking period, you know, let's take a look at that point. See, what are we, what are we seeing? We want to expand it to 66%. We want to maintain 33%.
Okay. Two observations, not really questions. It's saying for attendance, the children are going to check in each, students are going to check in each period. So I'm here and after my attendance is taken, I walk away and go play my video games. Then I come back for the next period is, I mean, that could happen.
I mean, that, that could happen, Mr. Deprima. I mean, but I think the, the goal of having live remote instruction is that the teacher is going to be presenting content for the students. And it would be similar to if you were at the high school and the student said, oh, I'm here. And they sit down there on their desk. And then they say, oh, can I go to the bathroom? And 39 minutes later, they come back to the class for, for one minute. That's, that wouldn't necessarily entail the student having attended that class and that teacher would have to address that. But that's something that, you know, we, we actually deal with normally on the, you know, secondary level and something that, you know, the teachers would, we would provide clarification from teachers. um, you know, the teachers would, we would provide clarification from teachers. But, you know, if the students are actively participating in in the live remote instruction and getting the content, then they would get credit for that respective class.
Okay, one more thing, please. When, um, as far as the equipment, we was talking about taking students' temperatures. I'm assuming it's the the remote thermal thing that they point at the forehead. At graduation at Lombardi Field, the CERT people were doing that for us and the lady who took my temperature looked at me, she said, it's ninety-two. Am I dead? She said, when you're sitting in the car with the air conditioner on, like, yeah, getting to Lombardi, I had, I was in the car with the air conditioner, I guess, blowing on my face and my temperature read ninety-two. So it's not not accurate.
For the, for the most part, we've seen them accuracy. If there was a, and we have a measure in place, obviously, that if a student has an elevated temperature, that we just don't assume it's just elevated. They would then go to the isolation tent for further screening. Um, similar would be done. Obviously, we have trained, we'll have people trained to do these screenings. So if someone comes up with a ninety-two, we're not going to take it as a ninety-two. Um, and, you know, maybe use a different device.
Okay. As far as the plan and the students, I I just want to echo what Mr. Dunn was saying, but I'm done. Thank you.
Anyone else with, uh, Ms. Burns?
Yes. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Stojakowski.
Okay, um, yeah, I listened on a meeting today for three hours or three and a half hours. It was very beneficial. I picked up a lot. I have a couple of relatives that work out in Bayonne and they're opening up the schools for the teachers to come in in September. I'm very glad that I, just the first I heard of it over here, that we we are opening up the buildings for the teachers. I think it's very beneficial. One of the people or one of the family members is a science teacher. She does not have all these things at home where she can actually demonstrate a lab in her room and whatever it may be on a remote scale. I'm very glad, but how are we going to get the information to the teachers where the schools are going to be open for them to come in? I realize a hundred seventy-five of them are going to opt out or whatever it may be. But if we give them the opportunity, I think it's more beneficial if a lot of the teachers do start off and then little by little, use the, use the program that we have, start bringing in the kids, possibly the second marking period. Okay, I'm more, just like Mr. Dunn, I'm very concerned about the elementary students and the special ed kids. These kids in a first grader or kindergarten, they're completely lost when they come to the, the, this type of learning. And with a teacher right in front of them, where they can see the teacher in the room, I think it would work. That's my opinion.
Right. So, yes, so the option, the benefit will be there for teachers to use their classroom space. Um, we've already addressed it with the administration. So they they know that, um, administration must be present uh in school. So teachers have the ability to come in and use their classroom learning space for uh the remote uh portions of the the instruction. So yes, that has already been laid out for them. And then, once we proceed beyond this point, uh, notification will go out to the staff with a whole myriad of information they're going to need to get trained and be ready for the opening of school uh on September the eighth. But yes, I think it's important too that they have access to resources that they may not have at home. We just have to, we just have to make sure we do it and, you know, people take their temperature on their way into the building, uh, that their hand washing is done, uh, they use masks when they're uh walking the hallways and they're not alone in a classroom. All of that.
Are we gonna have, are we gonna have shields in front of their desks? In other words, like I walk into a supermarket or something like that, they have a shield in front of all these people.
Well, not if they're the only ones in there.
Um, not, well, little by little, we're going to have to bring them in anyway. And when the kids come in.
Right. When the kids come in, we're having increased levels of PPE depending on how, um, the proximity of the of the students and the teachers.
Okay, I'm on the same page with this, Mr. Dunn. We have to really concentrate on the elementary and the special ed kids.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes, I I just have one question. So when we start the hybrid model, is this the remote platform that we're going to be using? Um, for children who want uh to maybe stay remote? So we'll still be utilizing a live instruction then?
Yes. Ms. Doctor, you want to add to that anyway?
Yeah, yes. Well, I mean, it's the, the model will be a little different because the the days where it's, uh, teachers are going to be in session. Uh, the live remote instruction component would be in the PM for secondary and elementary students. So on, in the hybrid model, uh, the students are attending, you know, their respective cohort day. Um, and the teachers are in live with the students. And then at the end of the day, uh, there would be a period of time for live remote instruction on Monday, Wednesday, Friday in the PM. And then Tuesday and Thursday would be all-day instruction. So, uh, to maintain the continuity of the cohorts, uh, that was the best way to approach that hybrid model.
Thank you. That was all.
Okay, thanks. Um, you, um, either Mrs. Kelly, Mr. Giordano, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, I'd like to speak. Um, my only problem is, is that, um, we're not really considering the parents that both of them are working and they want their child, especially if they're younger in elementary school, that they can be watched and they can get that in-person education. And especially for some people that really want that value of the in-person, face-to-face education, uh, considering that those homeowners are paying the property taxes that pay for this education. So that's a big deal that these people that have to leave their children alone, they don't have people or guardians to watch them as they're learning and going through the difficulties of navigating this online platform.
Yeah, I I I agree with you a hundred percent. This is not an easy fix and there's no fix that addresses all of the, um, all of the concerns, you know, um, I I'm sure everybody knows that, you know, Olbridge did not invent the COVID nineteen and uh it's been kind of thrust upon all of us and the only, the only thing we can do is respond to it, but respond to it with health and safety first. And everything else has to come after that. Uh, if if if, you know, like I said, so as a, as a board member, as administrator, whoever's signing off on this, if you're signing off that students will come back and staff will come back and you're ensuring that you've done everything they can to maintain their health, what, you know, what is your response when a, a student child, staff member falls ill because of it? And it's deemed that it could have been prevented because the governor gave you another option at some point. Well, you know, the governor said you can do remote, but you chose not to. When that option was available to you, um, board member or administrator, how come you didn't choose that option? And now my loved one is in the hospital.
Um, no, I'm just saying the concern of the people that are going to leave their children at home and they have no other option. Either they don't have someone to watch the children as they learn and go through the process or they can't afford other people to take care of them. That's the only concern.
Mine are all played. Except for the black one. And the new.
Uh, Miss Kelly, did you have anything? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I had about a hundred questions going into that meeting this morning, but um, they've all been answered. So I have all the information I need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just had just, um, a couple of clarifying things. I want, um, I just, just one of the things Mr. Giordano said about the taxes. I would, I agree with that. I would, however, I would say the faculty will be working and be working very hard, even though they're physically not with the students. I think that, um, to say that they're not working hard and earning everything is, you know, I don't want that just because physically they're not together does not mean that the the work effort is not there. And the same thing with the administration because physically how we are working right now and how we are together looks different and uh, that, uh, to say that people are not performing or earning their money is 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 not true. So I still want that to be just because physically we're not there, doesn't mean they're not do not deserve the the pay they get. Um, but Mrs. Sedino, I don't know if you can talk a little bit more because I believe it is a concern about the working families. We did talk about that last meeting. Um, and so, uh, you know, I know there are some conversations going on. I'm not sure if you can talk about that of how we can assist as well as, um, are there accommodations if, and I would, I think, again, this is mostly with elementary. If, um, a child doesn't have somebody at home who can support them, is there, you know, or they're not going to be penalized because they weren't online at that time? And is the, the direction to reach out to the school principal or to the guidance counselor, or what's the best way uh for that if there is a situation where it would really, uh, you know, is becoming a crisis or needs some assistance? Is there something, if you can talk about that at all?
So on on two parts, I'll talk the second question first. Um, you know, as as I'm sitting here, I'm getting updates from around this, this other other superintendents that I'm in contact with. And, you know, approximately since, like I said, it was probably by the end of tomorrow, the eighty districts have gone to a full remote for marking period one or two. Um, and you, you know, you get some uh good ideas out of that. And one of them, a a district, and I'd be happy to, I think it's some validity to it, is to have grade-level teachers, um, available for, you know, obviously to hire them to do, um, almost like night school, um, to be able for parents to reach out, um, walk them through a question or a lesson, to have lessons online for them that they could walk through, you know, to have a, especially at the elementary level, first, second, third grade, fourth grade teachers, um, staff members professional that, that if a parent wants to, has a concern, uh, that they could reach out to them and schedule time, almost like lab time, uh, to help them through a lesson or help them through, um, some of their applications we have. We could do the same thing with our tech integration specialists, give them opportunities to to work, um, later hours uh that will a-assist with that. Um, because we don't, we want the, obviously, the flexibility because we understand that, you know, some parents, you know, may be calling upon grandparents or someone else to to assist and they may be in transition or being transported during the time when school's in session. So we have to have the flexibility, um, to do so. Um, the, the other question you had was about childcare. I've had meetings, uh, last week, this week, and I'll have a meeting tomorrow, a Thursday in reference to, um, outside providers and trying to see if we can approach like a shared service agreement to assist the neediest parents in that, in that realm. But I would need more direction from the board and our attorney uh going forward with that. So, uh, that might be something I send out to the board another ti- uh, sometime this week, just to get your field, your feedback on. And our attorney, of course.
Okay. Um, any other board members? So what we will do is this will come up, uh, under, I think, well, it's it's not on the agenda, but it will come up under, uh, the curriculum. We can vote on that. And so, um, at this time, I just want to, at this time, we can go, uh, the next few things on the, on the agenda or the progress towards goals, the correspondence, which, Mr. Merritt, do we have any?
Yeah, I just want to just comment on that real, just real quickly. Um, typically by this time, we provide the board uh with an update as to everything else that we're working on facility-wise and so forth, curriculum-wise and professional development-wise and hiring-wise that we still have to do. But, um, we probably spend thirteen to fifteen hours on Zooms just for this, um, per week. So we haven't had a lot of time to give you updates on that. So at the next board meeting, um, considering that this would be, uh, something we've put to, put, put out and started working on that we'll have an update to the board and progress towards goals, towards all the summer projects and so forth that we have worked on. If anyone has been, um, gone and seen the entrance of Carl Sandberg, it really looks beautiful uh with the paving project that was done there, the new curbing that was much definitely, uh, needed. So uh, those will be some of the things we'll, we'll identify.
Okay, great.
And Ms. Ellis Foster, there is no correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Okay. And we have no special committee reports. So now we will open it up to hearing of the residents on any agenda, agenda items only. This will be considered an agenda item. So what I would ask you is if you want to put your hand up in, um, in, uh, from your thing, will, uh, I will call your name. Uh, I will unmute you. You'll be allowed to talk if you can just state your name and then, um, you can state your comment. So I'm just going to go down the list in the order that it comes up on me. The first person, um, I see is, uh, Mr. O'Neill. So uh, Mr. O'Neill, if you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
It's it's a little soft. Could you, uh, if, um?
Okay, thank you. Hi, thank you, uh, Madam President, and thank you for your supportive comments. Uh, unfortunately, I first feel the need to address Mr. Dunn's, uh, faceless comments claiming, or at least implying that, uh, our faculty and staff did not deliver in the spring. Um, with virtually no time to prepare, no training to completely change the modes of instruction that we rely on. The faculty and staff of Old Bridge and most school districts um turned on a dime, used our own computers, our own resources, our our own internet connection and did deliver. And I know this is true because I've had conversations with central administrators and multiple building administrators and asked them, how many complaints were there? Were a lot of parents uh upset or dissatisfied in the spring? And there were virtually no complaints throughout the district. Now, one question that Mr. Dunn asked was what has changed since last month? And obviously, what changed since last month is the governor gave the district a safer option. And an option that will not require a, a big net, uh, negative effect necessarily on the student's education. Now, I think that the more important question is what changed since March, when we closed? And as Mr. Sedino referenced, things have actually gotten worse. In March, we closed the the schools when there were a total of ninety COVID cases in the state of New Jersey. When Governor Murphy announced the road back guidelines, the guidelines at the task force that I sat on, that I worked with, used to devise the plan that we came up with. When he announced that plan, the five-day average of new cases was three hundred and ninety-seven per day. As of yesterday, the five-day average of new cases was up to four hundred and seventy-eight. So instead of the decrease in cases that the governor's guidelines relied upon, we actually have seen a twenty percent increase in new cases on that key metric. Uh, but I want to go back to Mr. Dunn's comments about uh, using the district technology. Um, making it available for teachers to come in and use the buildings if they wish to um, is something that is, could certainly be helpful if it's necessary. But the truth is that this is the second meeting in a row that you've touted the idea of making the district technology available to the teachers. The truth is that the district technology isn't necessarily better than the technology that we spend our own money on in our homes. My bandwidth is no worse than the bandwidth at the school. In fact, in the many, many meetings that I've been on with administrators who are in their offices in the district, invariably, those who have connection problems are those who are working from in the district. Further, having teachers come into the building puts them at risk, even if the students aren't there, even if only their coworkers, the custodians, the building staff, the administrators are there. It unnecessarily, in most cases unnecessarily, would increase the exposure. Uh, additionally, one of the major issues, as Mr. Sedino noted, is the HVAC system. Our HVAC system is operating with a a MERV, uh, level eight filter, I believe. In order to filter out the virus, you have to be, you have to have a level seventeen filter. And the way that most buildings HVAC system works would be if I'm in room one oh two and another teacher's in room one oh three, it sucks up the air from my room, doesn't filter the virus out, and then pumps it into all of the other rooms if the virus is present in one room. So I will certainly recommend that any of my members only go into the buildings as long as the district is remote as needed. Um, I I do want to highlight that I do think that the task force I do want to highlight that I do think that the task force worked very hard. And within the parameters that we were given, I think that the task force came up with a relatively safe plan. But the plan is only safe to implement if the outside elements that are beyond our control, primarily community spread, are brought under control by the community. And that simply hasn't happened thus far. The same metrics that are keeping the governor from opening gyms, opening gyms and movie theaters and indoor dining, same metrics that led him to reduce the number of people allowed in indoor gatherings recently are the same factors that keep it from it being safe for us to return to in-person instruction. Now, believe me, everybody wants to get back to normal. I have not spoken to one teacher that doesn't want to be able to go back and start the school year as we did in September of 2019. But that simply isn't the reality that we face. And I understand that there are a lot of childcare issues and a lot of those childcare issues that members of the community are dealing with are the same childcare issues that are preventing some of our members to to from returning to in-person instruction. The same FMLA childcare leave that some of our members have indicated that they'll have to use because they have no one to care for their children is also available to those who work in other areas. That is not a special program for teachers. Similarly, the accommodations and medical leaves that are being that teachers are being forced to request are based on documented medical concerns. So I want to make sure that it's clear to everyone that the the teachers, it's not teachers who don't want to come back or teachers who don't want to go back to normal or teachers who aren't willing to come back. They have constraints that stop them from being able to do so. And I want it to be clear that that 175 staff members, they are not simply choosing to not come back. They're facing the same types of difficult decisions that parents all across the country are facing right now. I think I covered everything that I wanted to say. Again, I just want to highlight that we all want to get back to normal. We all want to go back to in-person instruction and get back to business as usual. Unfortunately, in the world that we live in, that that simply isn't possible right now. And when you look at March and you compare it to now, if you want to go back to the question of what has changed? What has really changed is are people's emotions and people's frustrations and people's attitudes. It's no safer to return to school now than it was in March or May or June. The truth is that people have had their frustrations build up during the quarantine, during the the very gradual reopening that we've all been going through. And unfortunately, people have decided that they're going to blame the education system and teachers for things not getting back to normal at the rate that they want it to. And as Mr. Sidedino pointed out, Old Bridge did not create the virus, educators did not create the virus. And we are doing everything that we can to provide the education that all of our students deserve. But it should never be done at the expense of safety. And Mr. Sidedino, as you mentioned, is going to have to sign a certification that everything has been done to make the school safe before we can return to schools. And I think that any board member who is going to push him to open schools any sooner than he is comfortable with doing it should sign their name right along his and should be ready to stand up and take responsibility. When a teacher catches COVID and falls ill or passes away, or a parent passes away, or God forbid, it happens to a student. Because that is the decision that's being made here. Are we going to risk someone's life in order to try to force our way back to a normal that doesn't exist right now? Thank you for your time.
Okay, next on the list is Mrs. Babbitts. So I'm going to. There you go, Mrs. Babbitts, you should be able to unmute and just state your name and then you should be able to talk.
Hi, good evening, I'm sorry, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, thank you.
Hi, good evening, this is Stephanie Babbitts. Thank you for the update. My question is, will this, Dr. Tui, will this information be updated? Will this presentation be on the district website?
Yes.
Like when, tonight or tomorrow?
Probably tomorrow.
Okay. And if the parents of children with receiving special education services have questions? Are case managers still not, are they still out and unavailable? Should they be directing their questions to you?
We have case managers assigned to each building for the last two weeks of the summer to address any concerns that come up. I can funnel that information to them if the emails are sent to me.
Okay, so we'll just, I'll just encourage parents then to reach out directly to you because we have been getting a lot of questions. And I just wanted to say our our special education parent advisory group still extends an invitation to you to speak to the parents directly because a lot of questions have been coming up. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much and have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Babbitts. Next is Ms. Walter. I'm going to, there you go. If you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak right now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, how are you? I actually have just like three really quick questions and I'm hoping that they could be answered very simply. One, can teachers use Zoom platform instead of Teams or are they dedicated to Teams?
That be either Mr. Sidedino or?
Teams would be the primary point of contact for the teachers. Some of our speech younger specialists are a little bit more comfortable with Zoom. And the district is using Zoom for our child study team meetings just because it has a little bit more features and we have an upgraded feature for Zoom for our child site team meeting. So the teachers should be using Microsoft Teams as their primary option. And then in part because the training will be utilized with that.
Okay, thank you. And this is more for when we do return to in-person. One of my questions is if I do let my child go back and somebody in his cohort is ill, does the entire cohort? Are they required to be tested and prove a negative test to return to school? Or do they just require the 14 day quarantine?
According to the the standing orders from our doctor and the State Department of Health Regulations and our standing orders are shaped by that. That everyone within contact would only would be required to have a 14 day quarantine unless they become symptomatic. If they become symptomatic and they're ill, they would need a doctor's note to come back to school, clearing them.
Okay, and as far as the staff goes, do they only get one set of 14 day quarantine? If that means they get exposed to a child and they go out for their 14 days and then three days they come, three days later, they come back and they're exposed again. Do they have to use their own sick time or do they get another set?
We would work with our staff members to make sure that their safety and health is not compromised and they don't lose, unrightfully lose salary because of no fault of their own, they're exposed more than once.
I appreciate that. And my last question is actually something that a lot of parents have been asking me and I don't have an answer to. And it's a frightening term, the isolation tent. Some schools have been using the word isolation room, isolation area. For some reason, Old Bridge chose the word tent and it just comes, it brings very scary things to mind. So if maybe you can just elaborate on what that process would be, what it would look like for the child? And is it an actual tent? And I am done with my questions.
Right, so the isolation tent, the purpose of it is, you know, if you, if we, if we screen somebody prior to them entering the building, the last thing we want to do is then bring them into the building to screen them further. So the isolation tent, a 10 by 10 tents with their health professional there, then, you know, so if they're initially screened and they have an elevated temperature. We're not going to just take that as the only measure and take call parents to come take them home. We want to then have a healthcare professional take a look at them, re-screen them for a temperature and, you know, ask questions that might be, are you, you know, do you have a headache? Do you, how do you, how do you feel? And if they feel as though they they are symptomatic to the nature of our doc standing orders, then the parent would be contacted and the student would be picked up from there, but supervised the whole time at the tent. Isolation rooms are inside the school that once someone is already inside the school and becomes symptomatic, whether that be staff or student.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you might have said, I don't think you did, the tents will have sides down on them, so there's a little bit of privacy there?
We want to make sure there's privacy and you not, again, you know, I even, we even saw this in the spring where parents were or students were identifying someone that might have it. And, you know, it became a source of almost bullying. We want to make sure that this is a very sensitive time and we don't want students isolated because they had an elevated temperature that proved to be false. So we want to make sure we protect their identity as anything we do in any of our medical field. So we want to make sure that's there for them, to provide them that identity protection and also to screen them as sensitively as possible before bringing them into the school.
Okay, I have, I don't see anybody else, the hand risen, but while we have this one opened portion, just reminder, if you do want to speak, just raise your your hand.
I'm just asking a parent on the chat said basically, if you chose remote already, you do not have, we're not going to do another poll, you're on remote. So when the October 12th date comes, you'll you'll still stay remote. While this parents who chose hybrid will go to hybrid. If though, at some point, the parents who are on hybrid are still concerned or if their child felt more comfortable with remote, they can choose at that time to to continue with the remote. Like I said before, it doesn't, it does not cancel any indication you give, it just delays it, it delays its implementation and starts everyone on remote.
Okay, I see we do have another person. Last name is Prasad. I'm going to unmute you and if you can state your name and you can make a comment.
Hi, my name is Kulam Prasad. Mr. Sidedino, I want to say thank you for responding to my emails last week. One question I do have, now that it's going to be 100% remote, my daughter will be starting kindergarten. I'm kind of sad that she won't have that interaction with her teacher. But will there be like a tutorial for the parents as to how to get them on to Teams or whatever it is that they have to get on to?
Yeah, so we're working towards kind of a kindergarten orientation for you at this point that would introduce new parents into what they need and get them the, to training they need and the facts they need to be prepared once we start the remote. And kind of walk you through the kindergarten orientation process, but done so remotely.
Secondly, will there be district wide computers or do I have to go out and buy another computer for her or laptop?
No, we use the CARE, we use the CARES funds and the Digital Divide funds that we were granted to provide a HP stream for every student. So we will make sure that your child has a device.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much for all that you guys do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give it one more second. However, what I would also just remind people two things, we'll have another public comment at the end. Also, as you have more questions, because I know this is, you know, questions can come up later, we still have that email address, which is covidreentryquestions@obps.org. And as we said, we will post this presentation tomorrow. And there is a list of FAQs that we will update as things go along. But however, too, if you have questions, you know, the building principals are in, so you can reach out to them. I know many people have sent not only the administration emails, but the board emails, we'll try to answer everything and get the information out there. And the other thing I would say is I'm going to assume, when I looked at my calendar, you know, it's two weeks away. I'm going to assume there's going to be more communications going out to parents with, you know, information that's going on, when to pick up devices. And I know the other thing, just to piggyback on what Mr. Sidedino said, that we will have, for lack of a better word, I'm going to call it Parent University Online that we will have available to all parents to explain, you know, at each level, what the student dashboard will look like and some of that as well as showing them what their student would be seeing. Is that correct? I hope I didn't misspeak there, Mr. Sidedino, is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, as we get through this process and we present the information to the board, then a whole slew of information will start coming out to parents on a more regular basis as we get closer to the beginning of our school year.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public portion. We'll kind of move on with our agenda. Here we go. All right, so our next item is policy. And we also, just a reminder, we had an amendment, amendam to to the policies to add the policy for homeschooling and equivalent education outside of the schools. The policies are available online. I don't know if Mr. Parton, if you want to say anything about the policies, this is just the first reading.
I think that the the policies are all mandatory updates. There was an optional one that we did not recommend. The committee has reviewed that and is comfortable with that. The only really current event notable policy is the homeschooling policy you just referenced. The reason that's added for tonight is that there is some lack of clarity in your current policy about homeschooled children's access to your extracurricular program. That will be cleared up with this new or revised policy 9270 and the accompanying reg. And that is why it's on for tonight for a first reading. It is going to be on next Tuesday for a second reading and adoption in time for the 2021 school year, such as it is.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions about the policies? So now here we do have another slight adjustment. So next we would go into curriculum professional development, one through seven, where we have nothing to vote on. However, I would request, and I'm sorry to throw this at you, Mr. Mara, is if here we could take the role for the board on the amendment. Am I not sharing the, am I not sharing the agenda? Let me try that one again, thought I was sharing it. There we go. All right. There's the agenda. What I would suggest is that during this, if we can add a roll call to and add the amendment to the reentry plan under curriculum and take the vote here. It's not on here, so we're gonna just kind of wing it. And if Mr. Merrick, we can just kind of maybe take the same, take one of the previous lists.
Okay, I got it, I got it, no problem.
So before we go ahead and do the vote, do any final comments from anybody on the board? Just on the on the reentry amendment, then we can go to any questions on one through seven.
Yes, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Dunn.
I want to just take two seconds to respond to the OBA president, Tim O'Neill. And first, I just want to make it very clear that there is no bigger supporter for our staff than Rich Dunn. You know, maybe he has forgotten that I'm married to an elementary school teacher here in the district. And I see the pressures, I see the pain, I see the tears when they're trying to do their very best. And I did not disparage teachers and say that they couldn't, they didn't do a good job back in 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 the spring regarding the virtual aspect. They didn't have the tools, they didn't have the abilities. So I never said that they failed. And quite frankly, you know, I'm appalled that that Tim O'Neill would point me out and say that I was disparaging teachers. And that's not the case to him very clearly. I just want to make it very I just want to make it very clear that I have an obligation to this district, specifically the taxpayers and specifically the children. Yes, staff is very important. They're a big part of this, Tim. But the children are my most important aspect. So please don't dictate to me what's right and wrong. I understand the ramifications. I understand very clearly what is important here. And yes, life and safety is important. I know that for a fact because I'm a deputy fire chief here in town and I see what's going on. So when you point me out specifically, I take offense, Tim. And quite frankly, I think what the administration has come up with is, is doable. I believe teachers can go into the classroom safely. I believe teachers and staff have been going to the store to buy provisions and get medications for their families. So they're not quarantined in their homes all the time like you're alluding to. So we're here to do what's best for our children, our best for our town. And I'm going to do what I think is right for my children. Yeah, I call them my children. And I'm sure the other eight board members would do the same. But we also have a responsibility, Tim, to our teachers, to our staff. And I know how important they are, believe me. Because I see it firsthand every day when my wife is trying to prepare and do what she can for the betterment of her students. And I can tell you unequivocally, every teacher in this district does the same thing. So please, I'm the most aggressive supporter of the teachers here. I've spent thousands of dollars in my own pocket to make sure that my wife has the materials. And I'm going to continue to do that. So we need to find the common ground and work together, Tim. That's what's important. And you know what? Dave, the administration, the committees have done a great job. And my concern is the elementary school students. I know what they're going through. And I'm fearful that they're going to get left behind. But I never said the teachers weren't doing anything to assist and do what they have to do. So with that said, I'm going to vote yes on this with a lot of reservations because I believe in what we're trying to do. So with that said, I appreciate the time.
Right, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any other board members? Mrs. Burns?
Hi, I have a question for Mr. Parton about the addendum that we're voting on here under, where was it? Pupils with disabilities, the superintendent will consider requests for evaluation of all potentially disabled homeschool children to make a determination whether or not to conduct an evaluation. Why is the superintendent making that? Not a case manager or somebody who knows the student?
Two answers. First of all, that is language that has been and is currently on your books and is the standard policy statewide. Secondly, it names Dave because we always name Dave. It is inherent in naming the superintendent that it's the superintendent or his designee, probably Dr. Tui and the various child study team members, depending on this specific question. So it doesn't mean it goes directly to Dave. It means that it is channeled through the superintendent's office.
Thank you for clarifying.
Anyone else on the change to the amendment to the reentry plan? You know, I just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody in the committees and the parents and the staff and the students on it. As we said, you know, they're typically a two-hour meeting. Today it was three and a half hours. You know, it's certainly is not an easy, there's anguish, there's angst, there's, you know, frustration, an issue we did not create. So, you know, I think based on everything everybody was saying, I think we're still working on how, as we're saying, we take everybody's concerns and what additional things we can do for our elementary, how we can continue to support our working families. You know, people are, we don't want people, you know, to be making these difficult choices. So, you know, if things open and things are great, we hope to have kids back as soon as possible. So with that, Mr. Mara, roll call please on.
You need a motion?
Thank you. Can I have a motion for Burns first? Can I have a second, please? DeCaro, she got you. DeCaro, second.
Sorry, Mr. Dunn.
So, so this voting on accepting the amendment, the addendum to the reentry plan.
It's actually Ms. Ellis Foster, just for clarification.
That's okay.
You're voting to direct the superintendent to submit the application of the amended plan to the DOE.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Mr. Dunn? Yes. Mr. Giordano?
Abstain.
Mr. Solakowski? Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
The reentry plan is approved.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue on. Any questions on the agenda for curriculum professional development, one through seven?
There's an action item there, Kelly, on number one. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in, I'm in athletics. Sorry.
Okay. All right, so no questions. We'll move now to athletics where we do have an action item. If I can have a motion to move athletics number one?
Callie, I move.
Ms. Callie, can I have a second, please?
Burns will second.
Burns, second. Right. Any discussion? All good? All right, roll call, Mr. Mara, please.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, thank you. Next we move to finance. We have actually three things. We have one and two, and then the item that was the amendment, amend them to add to this. Amendment, amend what?
Addendum.
Addendum.
And I, and Ms. Foster, I would just ask that the item number, the new item number one be voted on first and then item number two and three second after the motions are done. Okay?
Okay. So the first motion is for.
You did a motion for all of them, but just the voting should be for number one first. There'll be two votes, one for number one and one for number two and three.
Okay. All right, so can we have a motion? I shared the wrong screen again. Oh, no, I didn't. Sorry. A rough night. There we go. So if I can have a motion for one through three.
Dunn will make a motion.
Mr. Dunn, thank you. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Callie, thank you. Okay, so we will be voting on, well, first, any discussion? Any questions? Okay, then first we'll move to the addendum.
Number one, yes.
Vote on that. So roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
Okay, resolution one passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we will go on.
To two and three, the bill lists. Okay. So Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
So one, two, and three pass. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mara, any questions on one through 19? There is nothing in non-certificated personnel office. We have two things on non-certificated personnel operational. Anybody have any questions on any of the two items? No? Non-certificated personnel other. One through four. Mr. Solakowski, you'll have something to talk about, number one, at the meeting. Any questions on any of the items, one through four? Going twice, okay. Next, certificated personnel. There's nothing to vote on. Oh, yes, there is. We're, let's see, we're going to voting on number one through four. So can I have a motion on certificated personnel, one through four?
Burns will. A motion.
Okay, Burns, and then second by Giordano. Thank you. Okay, any questions? Yeah, any questions, concerns, comment?
Board members with spouses who are teaching staff members would need to abstain on number three. Or immediate family members.
Can they just say that in their vote opposed to separating Mr. Parton?
Yes, yes.
Okay, no questions. Mr. Merrick, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes, except for three, I'm abstaining.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes, except for three. No, I don't have to abstain on that, do I? I don't think so.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, an abstention on point three, Mr. Merrick.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four pass.
Any questions on the remaining items, five through 31?
Yes, we have two retirements coming up on this agenda. And I will discuss that next week during the regular meeting, and that's it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Solakowski.
Ms. Alice Foster, I just want to make a notation on number six, A. This is not a new position. It is a change in the language, but we had a, we have a reduction in a Spanish position. We had a staff member leave last year that we were unable to fill and filled with the sixth period. And as of the end of this year, based on our numbers, we needed to, instead of filling the Spanish, fill the Mandarin Chinese, which we have a candidate as of today, so we will have a name on the agenda next week. And also, we had a French teacher resign and I interviewed and should have a candidate for next week in those two positions. So I just wanted to note that that's not a new position. And, excuse me. On number seven, there are a couple of blanks there that need to be filled in. And I don't know if you want me to walk you through the remainder that have some blanks and just talk about them?
Further down?
Yes.
Why don't we just tell me what number and I'll stop?
Number 13, we are adding five additional days. Number 19, we have, this motion has additional names that are being added for the elementary staff who worked on the planning, the instructional videos this summer. They just didn't make it up here tonight. And I also want to point out number 24. This is a group of staff members that are specifically going to be working to support the social emotional learning and the mental health of our students. They are a committee that has been established and they will be using a tiered approach. They are, this is grant funded. So this is another opportunity for us. We, during the conversation earlier, we talked a little bit about the attendance and how follow-up and supporting the students who maybe are struggling to sign in at a certain time. That's something that this committee will be able to work with. And they will be providing training and information to the remainder of the staff during the opening days. And the rest of the motions here are, are regular motions that we have every year for staffing coordinator positions, liaison positions. There are nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Hoker? Okay. We'll move on to non-certificated personnel transportation, one, two, one and two. Any questions, comments? Next, supplies, equipment and services. We have three items to vote today. Can I have a motion for items number one through three?
Burns will move one through three.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn, thank you. Any questions? Comments, concerns? None? All right, then, if, Mr. Merrick, we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie? Ms. Callie?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three pass.
Any questions on the remaining items for next week, four through eight? No, okay. Next, transportation. Nothing to vote on today, just one through four. Any questions, concerns? Next, miscellaneous. There's, there's nothing to vote on. Just one, one change that is known that we'll be making it to the final agenda, just a clarification on June 9th. It was a special meeting just for the CSA self-evaluation, the board self-evaluation. We're doing that in September. So that'll be updated to reflect that. That was the one thing. Any questions, concerns about one through eight? Nothing in board, secretary of board business? No? Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing this. We can, let's stop that. Again, I just want to get that up. We can open the hearing to the residents again. I just want to get that up so we know the rules. Going to share. There we go. Hang on, I apologize. I'm a little slow on this today. Not going to be sharing. Hang on one second. I apologize. Let me try this again. There we go. All right. Thank you. Here we are. Okay. So once again, open to the public. We'll just kind of use the same process. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, hit star nine. I'll kind of go down the list in order as they come up on the screen. So I do see Mr. O'Neill, we unmute. Okay, Mr. O'Neill, if you unmute your. Okay, Mr. O'Neill, if you unmute yourself, you'll be able to speak.
Thank you again, Madam President. I just want to say a few things. First, members of the OBA know exactly when we're being supported and by whom. I also want to stress that no one cares more about making sure that our students get exactly the education they deserve, more than myself and my fellow teachers. Sometimes, it's my responsibility to make sure that they don't do so at the risk of their own lives and their own families. So I would like to thank the board members for appropriately addressing the issue in front of them tonight. And thank you all and stay safe.
All right, let's see. Anyone else? If I'll just give it a minute to either raise your hand on the Zoom or if you're on the phone, if you do star nine. I'm gonna give it one more minute. I know it's been a long evening, so I appreciate everyone's patience. Okay. All right, I don't see anymore from the public. So with that, I will close the public portion. And now we'll just kind of see if there is any, any old business. Okay. Only, the old business, I just want to remind board members tomorrow, we do have our meeting with our New Jersey School Board rep to go over the district goals. It's at seven o'clock. Hopefully, that's, this is gonna be an hour. It's not gonna be a lot of time, so that's up. And then also, I'll remind you, next week, we have to the end of the month to finish our self-evaluation. So that is, you know, out there, that we'll have to the end of the month, and we'll do that in early September. Anybody else for either old or new business? Mr. DePrima?
Yeah, sorry, I just have a question. Please forgive me, but I had a little lapse earlier. The addendum, how did the, what exactly did that do for the plan? Was that for the plan itself, or was that just for sending the plan into the state? I apologize for not getting that straight. Is Mr. Setitino still here?
Yeah, I think, is that Mr. Setitino, Mr. Parton? I don't know. I mean, logistic, you said?
And legally, what it did was it, it's an application to change your timeframes for the implementation of the 2021 school year. If Dave wants to add anything more to that, I think that basically what was discussed is just the push back to October 9th and then the 33 and 66% as, as possible after that.
Right, so it just provides me with the authority. You know, going forward, that I know have the board's support to amend our application. It still remains as a hybrid learning application, just that it starts off with a remote platform and phases in the hybrid after the first month of school.
Okay, Mr. Mara? You there?
Yes, I am.
I apologize, but can I change my vote on that? I just lost track of what it was and I got it wrong.
Mr. Parton, are we okay with that?
You are, you are still in the same meeting, so legally, yes, Mr. DePrima can revise his vote.
So what is your vote, Mr. DePrima?
I know an abstention equals a no, but just, I will go with the abstention. No offense to anybody to put this in place. I just, it just doesn't sit right. Thank you.
Okay, so the resolution still passes.
I understand.
Any other old or new business? Okay, so there, we'll, during the meeting, however, we do have to go into executive sessions. Mr. Parton?
Yes, you need a motion for executive session for matters of property security and personnel. And just for clarification purposes, the board will not be out other than to adjourn after exec session.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion for executive session?
Callie, I'll move.
Ms. Callie, can I have a second, please?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're going into executive session at 9:45.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and please stay safe. And again, remember, if you have any questions, please just use the.